Can everybody hear me?
Louder.
Louder. My name is Mr. Ward Parkinson, I'm the moderator tonight. Welcome to the town meeting. A couple of ground rules, please turn off your cell phones. You want to be recognized to speak, there'll be an opportunity to do that once a motion has been made and seconded. And I will recognize you if you stand up, state your name, it will be recognized and given ample opportunity to speak on each of the warrant articles. We're going to be using the main moderator's manual, which is the standard manual used in town meetings, the same manual that we've been using all these years. And the next order of business is for me to announce the results of the elections. For selectmen, for a term expiring 2016, Donna DeKindren, 124 votes. Alma Jones-Goats-Hayes, 169 votes. Jason Nato, 154 votes. For the RSU 21 term expiring 2016, Kim Haye, 225 votes. And write-in votes, eight. There was no qualifying, there were no qualifying votes for the budget board, the budget board term. So congratulations to the winner of the election. The next order of business is to approve non-resident folks to speak at the town meeting. And the list of non-residents who might, at some point, want to or need to speak would be Todd Jay, the town manager, Ted Redway, the town planner, Jen Dumas, the Parks and Res director, Ruth Mullin, the Rundle Rescue Chief, Sheriff Maurice Swallett, the Huron County Sheriff's Department, and Officer Troy Chinard, who's the Rundle contract deputy. Is there a motion to allow these non-residents to speak? Second. Motion's been made and seconded to allow those non-residents to speak. All in favor signify by raising your card. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, so we're on our way now, everybody has the warrant articles in front of them. We'll be starting with Article 2.
Mr. Moderator?
Sir?
I don't care how to do this, but is there any way we could have an article moved forward from the county, folks in here? If you want to talk about something very important, they're showing up late in the list. So they can get home, take their kids, or take their sisters and stuff.
Yeah. The rules of moderator's manual does allow a motion to take an item or an article out of order. So somebody needs to make a motion to take a motion of one of the articles out of order. And that requires a second, and it is debatable. And it requires a two-thirds vote to pass. So if somebody has a particular article they want to be taken out of order, they can make that motion now, or they can try it later. Sir, state your name, please.
My name is Sam Hall, Rundle resident. I'd like to uphold the Article 10-20 being forward.
Okay. The motion's been made and seconded to allow Article 20, which, just so everybody's clear what Article that is, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate $12,000 towards the operating costs of the Kenny Bunk Free Library. The motion's been made and seconded to take that article up right now. Is there any discussion on whether or not it's the right thing to do to take that article out of order? I'm seeing any, I'll ask for a vote on the motion to take Article 20 out of order. All in favor signify by raising your card. All opposed? The motion is carried, so we're gonna go straight to Article 20. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate $400 towards the operating costs of the Kenny Bunk Free?
Twelve thousand.
Very important, this thing. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate $12,000 towards the operating costs of the Kenny Bunk Free Library? Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Your second. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve Article 20. How about the discussion on Article 20, the ones to be recognized? Sir, stand and say your name.
I'm Jean Foster, I'm a resident. Last year it was zero. And I spoke on behalf of last year. How many people in Rundle had to pay whatever the fee was to use the library last year? How much did that fee?
Okay, now, are your questions, all questions come from me?
How many people in Rundle had to pay?
Okay, now I'll ask somebody else to say their name. Anybody else want to be recognized? If that's the case, select one. Ma'am.
I'm John Hall, I asked a lot of you that question, and we were coming around.
And how much did it cost people of 100,000 families to use the library?
Everybody clearly answered that.
Mr. Moderator, my name's Rich Canom. When we passed that article, I went to the library, they told me it would cost $30 to get a library card and use it. I turned my library card into them, because I thought they had a lot of smarryly to ask us to give them money. And when we refused, they decided they wanted to charge all the people for a free library. So I said, "No."
For the comment on Article 20, recognize the lady in the back.
This is Laura Parkinson, I wrote, "I also was, I was really disturbed that we voted this down last year, and in a week's time, I found out that I can go to the Graves Library, the Pink Portis Library, and not pay a fee at either one of those. And work in Portland, you also can get a library card there."
Ma'am, where is it?
You can also-
Let me say your name.
Hi, Denise Rark. You can also go to the community library online at Route 111, and that's the library that I've been using. And I'm sure that I consider $12,000 that went to the Graves Library and the library line. I'm glad you take the donation of $100 and will just show good faith, Shana.
Sir? Please, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to point out that with different articles, we're voting to-
Please keep your voice up a little bit.
Sure. We're voting to increase the Parks and Recreation budget by $21,000, you know, between the 10 and 20, I'm thinking of like-
Ruth Green.
My name is Bruce Green, I live on Downing Road here in Rundle. And I do have a little bit of history with the Kinnaman Library, years ago I did serve on that board. I think we are raising our kids here, around the Rundle schools. We used the library heavily when my kids were young. And I think that other people may too, and I would say, refer me up on Long Island, the future speaker Sam Hall. A thousand people in Rundle use the Kinnaman Free Library, when they were last involved, and they're paying enough to be a member. We used to not just borrow books, but it's about DVD, it's books on tape. I feel like we're part of the community, Kinnaman, Portland, Rundle, Kenny Bunk, we're all a community. $12,000 to a thousand residents that you know have used it. Seems like a small price to pay for the services you get. And I would hope everybody in this room has been to that library, it's a wonderful place. My partner also now serves as the chair of that board, so I do have a little issue with it, connected with it that way. But we're up here, we're raising kids here, we use that library a lot. And actually, one of the Portland, as an Rundle resident, to borrow books or to use the library services seems a little bit silly. Kenny Bunk's right here, it's a beautiful library, beautiful facility. And with the trap is to be for that kind of mind. It's a rounding error, I think is a fair way of putting it, in total budget process, it's a rounding error. Very small amount of money in the large picture for the services that I personally put in this work.
Nick Paltier, Rundle resident. The stat says that 109 people purchased library cards last year. The gentleman over here said that they were costing $30 a piece. That's $3,200, just over, why are we appropriating $12,000?
Rich Canom, again, the last time I was on the budget board, which would have been last year, we were asked to raise $9,000, and we voted nothing. So we gave them nothing last year, and this year they've come back and asked for a 33% increase. A $3,000 increase. The numbers don't add up?
Ma'am.
I'm John Hall, I have a lot of, I have a lot of, but let me just say it here. $12,000 is three bucks, $3 a person. Well, the whole number is close to 1,000, I think it was 178, which is about 25% of all of the residents in Rundle who use that library. Not just, they're actually borrowing, they're sort of things up. Now, a lot of people use it, they're just doing the R and D and the kind of programs without registering with the card and taking this stuff out. We get 25%. I mean, I don't know, in all of the community, in all of the things that happen, what a huge percentage of our community does that one thing, 25% use the library. Three bucks a head. Now, when we defunded last year, it dropped to 109 families. And that's less than 7%. Now, you can't believe, I can't believe that difference, and 25% of all of us using this dropping to less than 7% of the households is because people didn't see value in it. But I think we created a barrier by not funding. Now, you know, what's a community for? Are we just supposed to fund roads and safety? Well, I say that's extremely important, and that's sort of the bones of the community. But a library, that speaks to the soul of the community. And then we're spending close to $60,000 on truck and off vehicles and building maintenance. It seems to me that $12,000 to help maintain the linings of our community is a good buy. We talked about linings. I checked on a few of the libraries. Linings pay per resident, 16 bucks. Alfred and Benefit pay about $20, one of the last, one for a little bit more. The most in Kenny Bunk, find this library, they're $47 a resident. We're asked to do $3 to get exactly the same per year, which gives us reciprocal library rights in Graves as well as in Wells. I mean, to me, that's an awful good buy. And then when I was growing up as a kid, I didn't have much money. My dad worked all day, and then he sold insurance at night. And for me, the chance to use that library opened new worlds and showed me that there were opportunities. I've read about people that weren't much different than me that made a difference in the world. And told me that I had opportunities, that I could do stuff. Now, if my dad ever paid for that library, that guy, would he have done, would he have found the money? Maybe. It was tough times then, just as it is now. But I'll tell you one thing, he took him his line and asked Cherry for a charity $35, a $30 library ticket from the town. He wasn't new to that. And I think we're as proud as that here in Rundle, and that we're denying access to all of our citizens who are wonderful opportunities. And for me, just, you know, having worked in health for over five years, to me, funding the library, or cutting the library in tough economic times is like cutting the hospital in a play. So I would just ask folks to think the buy was a hidden, and not just for the folks in this room, but for, you can't tell me they're not kids in Rundle, other than me, who didn't have, that had an opportunity to have all of our items built in Rundle. And I think our kids deserve this much, and I would ask for it.
You made some good arguments.
Just say your name again.
But the $3 a head is, is funny enough, it's not. It's $12,000, I'll have to add here, and as he said, that's pretty $270 for 109 people with an eight-year. If I want to use the library, I can open my hand, $30, $30, $50, I will pay it. I don't need anyone to pay it for me. Now, I'm sure that there are people that perhaps can't afford that. And the town does have some items in the budget to help people that have a specific need. And I'm sure that a $30 library card is something the town could afford, for someone that really needs to use that library. Supporting the library across the board is not something everybody uses. I don't use the library, I need something, I want the internet. A lot of other people do too. Didn't have the internet 25 years ago, at least, if I'm aware of. I really believe that this $12,000 can be spent better. I see some other items in here that have been cut back a little bit. Everybody who uses the roads. And there are some roads that I see Roger is not prepared to fix yet this year, because it's not in the budget. But yet, those roads are deteriorating, one more winter like we had last winter, very quickly worse. And it costs a lot more to fix something that's worse now. Some of the vehicles that, the city drives, I mean, the school district drives, and the town drives, don't have much life left of them. So there are other items, when you put that goal, Chris, who wants to spend $12,000, fine. But I think there's better places to spend it than on a library that only 109 people use, or by her numbers, maybe 1,000 at one time. So I really think that we need to put that money somewhere.
Lady.
I'm working there, Rundle resident. I am very strongly supportive of funding the Kenny Bunk Free Library, and I think it's important to Rundle. It builds community daily. Perhaps some of the people that aren't in favor of funding the library aren't really aware of everything that it offers. It's a place where people congregate, there's Storytime Tuesdays and Thursdays, there's parenting classes and resources. There's classes hosted at the library from family health to online safety. There's a teen movie night, there's teen advisory, there's pick and book babies, there's times for twos and threes. I sound like a busher, but when my children were younger, the library was our second home. I worked from home during those years, and everyone who knew me knew where I was on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And then typically, one other day a week. It was where we met our friends. Miss Susan and Miss Suzanne, the primary librarians in the children's room, are still revered in our house. Just to overstate the obvious, the library encourages reading. There's a summer reading program, there's resources for homeschooling, all of which are important in this community. And they offer resources for assistance with reading. When one of my children was working on reading skills, it was the Kenny Bunk Free librarian who offered suggestions on book series, authors, and genres. When my children were younger, the MLDA library did not have many of the books it does today. So the KFL, when we were going to find more books. And today, school libraries are not equipped or furnished with the quantities and resources of a public library. You wonder who accesses it? John has already given us some numbers. Obviously, a public library is not just for the young. The Spears Gallery provides space for artists' exhibit work for the public to view, for young and old alike. There's trivia night, writers' group, adult discussion groups, nonfiction book groups, and the genealogy group, which are all adult programs for all of us. There's internet access for those who need it. Not everyone in Rundle has internet access. There are speaker presentations, such as the upcoming presentation by Jim Shepherd and Airman from World War II, who will be discussing his experience. The library has long been a place to find affordable entertainment, to expand your mind with free resources, to research whatever is on your mind. You can also find out so much about local history there. Archive material on our community is at that library. Over 40 years ago, when I was just a summer resident, on rainy days, our special treat was to go to the Kenny Bunk Free Library. So we rode from Wells to downtown Kenny Bunk. Inevitably, it might include a trip to the Five and Dime, or if we were lucky, an ice cream from home. But we knew for sure that we could get to go to the library. Back then, the children's room was still downstairs, but I remember being on the opposite side of the building and how it smelled like musty books. Well, that might not sound attractive, it was a familiar smell on a rainy day in Maine for me, and it meant I was about to go on a new adventure with a book feeding my imagination. Finally, I would ask that all of you support funding the Kenny Bunk Free Library, because it's the one place where people are always welcome, where staff is always willing to help, and where you can access information and resources in your local community. This is not to belittle any of the other local libraries around here. But the programming at that library is phenomenal. It is a lovely building where you can bring a child, your parent, or a grandchild, or a friend, and find a place to sit down and read, or discover something new. It's not an extravagant luxury, but rather a very reasonable and affordable necessity for the people of our town. Just as we need to maintain our roads, offer general assistance and social services to our fellow community members, we need to make sure that we offer free access to an institution that grows and maintains our minds, which only helps all of the community. As Albert Einstein said, "The only thing that you absolutely have to know is the location of the library." And it is on Main Street.
Just to clarify some of the numbers, if you have a chance to speak to the Kenny Bunk Free Library, of the number 900, I have a citizen abusing library. The numbers that they gave us last year, they consider about 250 to 300 to be continuous users of the library. The majority of that 900 are people that are one, only one or two time users of the library. So don't be misled, there's no guarantee that the numbers out there is not 900 people, 900 families who use that library on a continuous basis. It's more like 250 to 300, a little bit less this year. But those are their numbers, they're online. Check how the numbers are distributed, and you'll see it's not nine, not a quarter of the population. It's even out of that library all the time.
Sir?
Sam Hall, again. I realize it's not all the time that no one ever sent a box. The library's set at 946 carloads, who use the library 30 years. No frequency is 100. So I just wanted to clarify that, too. I had my papers, hopefully what I wanted to say is there aren't even sent by close to 400,000, I can't. Just a point, though, that our population is 4,000. We're talking about $12,000, which is three of us, there's only people to stay. That's less than a million a day. What we're talking about is for a year's worth of library access for each of our residents. It costs less than a Big Mac, is a lot better for you. I have two other things I just wanted to talk about. One of them is, we're funding free resident access to the library, help the town and the economic development committee. The Economic Development Committee, in which I'm proud to be a member, is almost finished with the study of how Rundle can grow and increase our business tax base in a manner that's consistent with our unique character, resources, and district. We're finding that most of our business growth, we're going to use small businesses. However, attracting small businesses-
Sir, just keep your voice up. Keep your voice up and try to-
I'm sorry. Is a key factor in economic development strategies for small towns like Rundle. Many of the new businesses we attract will be microenterprises, businesses with fewer than five employees. However, these companies require special resources, attention, and services in Rundle to prosper. But most small communities like Rundle are unable to provide such assistance. So you might ask, what is our economic development plan to do in funding access to the public library? Just this. Recent research shows positive return on investment of public dollars spent on library services. These studies overwhelmingly, they consistently show that public library produces positive returns on taxpayer investments by contributing both to the growth of existing businesses and by creating a nurturing and information-rich environment for entrepreneurs, small businesses, and large, and most importantly, find local employees with skills and talents they need to succeed in today's image environment. The last thing I just wanted to talk about, as I mentioned before, is community. My question to you would have been, will free library access for all Rundle residents help build our community and make our town a better place to work with and raise our kids? A former American president put it very well, his words still ring through today. He said, and to me it was William McKinsey, "A public library is a necessity, not a luxury. Every community which realizes this fact, proclaim to itself an intelligent, progressive town, and one worth living." A library is not for the culture few, it's not really for the scientific, scientific. It's not for any intellectual cult or exclusive library set. A free library is a great, broad, universal public manufacturing. It lifts the entire community. A free public library is the upper story of our public school system, where citizens learn throughout their lifetime. I asked the two votes yes on Article 20, this was a question. Is the right thing for us to do economically, business-wise, and as a community? Frankly, I'm suggesting that your way is a taxpayer, to the resident of a Rundle, to the man that we always have funded our library, to be secure in knowing that we will have free access to a place where we can learn for a lifetime. This right should never be put enough in. Thank you.
Phil Prince. I think that as a community, I think that we are a community of lifelong learners, whether we're children or adults. And the library is one of those places that allows us to be lifetime learners. And how can we say, there's all this talk about us needing to have an identity as a community, a different identity to this wonderful rural farm community that we already have, as far as I'm concerned, then how can we say connection to something is important, if the library is not an important part of that community? I think it has to be, or really, or as opposed to stepping back, we need to look forward into the future.
My name is John Bell, I'm on the Economic Development Committee. I don't want to take issue with anything that Sam said, but I think he left the definite impression that the Economic Development Committee was endorsing what he said. I just want to make it very clear that this topic has never been discussed, to the best of my knowledge, at the Economic Development Committee. And I think Sam is speaking for himself and not for the committee.
Jack Greaves. We're hearing arguments on both sides today. My view is this. Last year, the town voted to spend $25,000, more than twice what we're talking about today, to provide a study to brand and improve the image of the town, which would try to create a better sense of community. And now we're talking tonight about another point of goal of the library to play in that. And my view is that if we were to vote tonight not to do this, we would be saying that we really don't want to improve the town. We're too complex with each other. I think it would be very, very short-sighted if we were to not do this. It's a major part of what we're trying to do, to create good property values, create an image of the community where people want to move to. Live here, raise their kids, and have good, solid property values sends a terrible image to realtors, who say, "Oh, you don't like it." That's what I have to say, I just want to say this. Thank you.
I'm not a postal member, and it's probably the reasons for being here. If I want more information quicker than I can get on the internet, I just pay for a bigger package to get more information quicker. And while that's been for other people to pay for, my internet, it's like I have more information. Libraries serve some people, and that's great. And some people are willing to pay the extra money, $30, to go to the library. Just like I'll pay the extra money to get high-speed internet access. There is another warrant, the next warrant. If someone can't afford the library, the next warrant says, "Here, we'll get you a library card." So no one is going to be shut out because of a money issue in the town of Rundle. It's not, is the library good or not, or is it great? And I'm talking about access, who's paying for the access. And I think all of us pay for the access for a considerably small portion of our population, most of whom who already want to buy the cards. most of whom who already want to buy the cards. They can't, I think we ought to approve Article 21 and make sure the money's there. The little people can't afford it, still want the library, we'll get them in there.
Two things about that, what you mentioned, is, first of all, there are, the next, I would allow ten people to apply to the county premises, it's a thirty-five thousand people library. And you only allow for ten people to come forward and say, "I am so poor, and I am going to draw up and ask the town to pay for my children to go to the library," which I don't know a lot of people in the Bay that would do that. I certainly do. And the other point you made about the roads is, I don't drive on most of those roads in the U.S., and by that logic, you know, why should I be voting for my taxes to increase to pay the roads if I'll never even use them one? You know, I have my little route. And when I go to the library, I see so much baby down there for the children, and the genealogy group, and the book group, and it's just the fireplace you can go to. I don't have a wood stove, but I go there in February, March, and it's got a wood stove and a fireplace and just let everything go. I don't care about mud season or stokers or anything. I mean, it's, my center is palm oil, it's taking my energy, that's what I don't care about.
So, pretty clear that the hundred and nine people who hold library cards showed up tonight. They weren't here last year. The fact of the matter is that you have to evaluate the necessities of the town in some economic contexts. And it's pretty clear that some people are pretty envious of the sound of anyone in the forty-five per head or whatever they spend on the library. One thing you wouldn't be envious of is the amount that they pay in taxes, and there are people in the town that cannot afford that delivery. If we continuously just push forward and approve warrants that aren't necessities, you're going to drive the tax base out of town, and you're going to end up with a library card hanging.
David Berg, I have a question. Is it thirty-five dollars per person, or would it be thirty-five dollars per family?
Was your question is again?
Is it thirty-five dollars per family, or is it thirty-five dollars per person?
Can you answer that?
I pay thirty-five dollars.
Okay, come on. Please stand up and state your name.
My name is Chris Turcat. I live off the other end of the Limerick Road, and I was just, I did not come to town meeting last year. Had I known this was an issue, I would have been here, because I'm a great supporter of the library. And I ended up paying thirty-five dollars for my card this year. I could have gone and paid fifteen, I could have gone someplace else. This is a convenient, well-run, well-programmed library. I agree with this lady here who talks about a library being part of the soul of the community, kind of like a school is, okay? If somebody tried to take the school away, people would say, "Oh, no, that's part of our community." Well, the library is not any kind of, I mean, it's not in Arundel, but as an Arundel resident, this was, you know, this is why, there's no library in Arundel, so this is where I go. But as a single person, I pay thirty-five dollars to be part of the library this year.
Yes, Jack Greaves. There was a comment earlier concerning the mill rates. I believe the mill rate in Arundel is thirteen. Am I mistaken?
One person in the family pays thirty-five dollars if anybody needs a card. So, this program basically is, I get, we do, we do the cards.
I was going to ask a question.
Oh, go ahead. Can I answer it?
Yes.
I'm sorry to see you.
My name is Dave Scarborough, and I went to the library. I go to that library a lot. I live off the Civic Road in Arundel. And I don't, I normally just go read here out of newspapers, but I took out, I practically got a book one time, and I didn't know that this had all occurred. And as soon as she found out, I already had a library card there, and I had it for thirty years, because I lived in Haymont, fourth, before I moved to Arundel. And as soon as she found out I lived in Arundel, she literally snapped my card away from me. And I want to tell you, as a person living in America, where I consider libraries to be like a sacred refuge for people to go to, to have that happen was such a shock. And as I recall, several years ago, in town here, we agreed, I think, to spend something like, correct me if I'm wrong, sixteen thousand on a bus, a second-hand bus for the rec department?
Questions for David.
And, and I can't see how we could spend that kind of money on a used bus and not vote...
Twelve thousand?
To have our kids and our citizens in Arundel have a beautiful library, it's well-made, hidden, well-run, for all of us to go to and read. It's beyond my comprehension. Thank you.
My name is Leah Lowery, and the one thing I'll say, I've heard a lot of throwing around, well, you can just get the information on the Internet. I don't want my kids on the Internet without a library or myself right there. Yeah, you're right, there is a lot of information on the Internet, it's not always accurate. The library can help guide kids with their research. My kids are doing research projects, they know exactly where to go, what websites are reliable, what things they can look at, and it's the perfect place for them to go for that. I, I don't think the Internet is a replacement for libraries in any way, shape, or form, in the slightest way. You don't get the same kind of ancestry stuff, you don't get the same kind of historical documents, you can't get the same face time and, and structure for your children to learn how to do research, as well as where to go to do research. I think it's an invaluable thing for our community and for our children, as well as adults.
Thank you for your thoughtful point. Okay, I'm not seeing any more hands, so I'm going to ask for, show hands, all in favor of the passage of Article 20, signified by raising your cards. Keep them held up. Oh, anybody else raise their hands, like, I'll tell you. All those opposed to Article 20, please raise your hand, raise your cards. Okay, thank you. We're going to go back to the Article 20, the first regular article. Article two, shall the town adopt an ordinance entitled Amendment to the Arundel Land Use Ordinance 6.2, Court Note 11, permitting residential uses fronting Proctor Road and Old Post Road in the B.I. District? Is there a motion in regards to... Second. Motion's been made second, and to approve Article two. Discussion on Article two? Article two, all in favor of Article two, signified by raising your card? All opposed? Article two is passed. Article three, shall the town adopt an ordinance entitled Amendment to the Arundel Land Use Ordinance Section 7.7 B.A.A., permitting residential estate lots to be developed in the business, industrial, and highway commercial districts? Is there a motion? Opposed. Second. Motion's been made second, and to approve Article three. Discussion on Article three. Seeing none, all in favor of Article three, signified by raising your cards? All opposed? Article three is passed. Article four, shall the town amend the official zoning map to include all of the property identified by the Arundel tax assessor as tax map three, eleven A, plot eleven A within the residential with one district? Motion to approve Article four? Second. Our motion's been made second, and to approve Article four. Discussion on Article four? Seeing none, all in favor of Article four? All opposed? Article four is passed. Article five, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty-one thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars for the general government account? Motion? Motion's been made second, and to approve Article five. Discussion on Article five? Sir, cut.
My name's Todd Shea. I'm the town manager of the town of Arundel. I want to thank you all for coming out tonight. I just wanted to point out a few things. I don't know how many of you read the arrow. I nailed out a picture of the arrow recently, and my fingers in the arrow were incorrect. And so, I wanted to clarify, before we move forward with the budget that you have before you, this budget that you are looking at, barring any major loss of valuation of the town of Arundel, which I do not foresee happening, will be a flat-funded budget. You are currently looking at a mill rate of fourteen dollars and fifty cents. If you pass this budget as presented, the mill rate will be fourteen dollars and fifty cents. I wanted to clarify that, because I did, in your town report book, you were handed a correction. And what happened was, there were some articles that didn't transfer from last year, and when I deleted those out of the spreadsheet, the values from last year's approvals were eliminated. And so, the numbers that you look, you're looking at from the spreadsheet were incorrect in the book, but the handout that you got is correct. So, this does not represent the large increase that I indicated in the arrow. This is approximately a twenty thousand dollar increase on the municipal side, coupled with a thirty-eight thousand dollar reduction in the high rescue appropriation and a slight increase in the county tax. This will be a flat-funded budget.
Any other discussion on Article five? Any comments on Article five? All in favor, signified by raising your cards? Any opposed? Article five is passed. Article six, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred eighty thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars to the town hall administration account? Motion to approve, Article six. Second. Motion's been made second, and to approve Article six. Discussion on Article six? Seeing none, all in favor of Article six, signified by raising your cards? All opposed? Article six is passed. Article seven, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred thirty-nine dollars, two hundred thirty-nine thousand twenty-six dollars to your Arundel fire rescue gun? Sorry about that, guys. See if you got your folks to wait. Is there... Second. Motion's been made second, and to approve Article seven. Any discussion on Article seven? Sir?
Yeah, I noticed that...
Say your name again.
I noticed that the difference in the models, mostly we have fire chief for this coming year. Could be some explanation of why we need a fire chief?
The moderator, record, recognizes management chair.
Once, once again, as part of that correction that I had made, if you look at the corrected paper that was handed out to you, there was a thirty-two thousand dollar appropriation last year for the fire chief. So, last year's total appropriation would be approximately two hundred and thirty-four thousand for the department. Last year at town meeting, the vote was made to take on a paid, part-time fire chief. Prior to that, we had a volunteer fire chief, and the demands were becoming too great for a volunteer who held a regular full-time job, and so, that's why the decision was made to bring on a part-time fire chief, a paid, by the town of Arundel.
So, the discussion on Article seven? All in favor of Article seven, signified by raising your cards? All opposed? Article seven is passed. Article eight, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars to the miscellaneous services account? Motion to approve Article eight? Motion's been made second, and to approve Article eight. Discussion on Article eight? Your favorite?
I noticed that Article eight, Article five represented decrease from last year. Is there something that's changed, that's dropped, or we just got efficient?
Moderator recognizes town manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Yes, there have been efficiencies that have been gained in Article five, as stated. We had some reductions in the mail-in to the arrow, which was included in that line. In the, in Article eight, there was a reduction of ten thousand dollars in the contingency account, which is represented because of approved time and arrears that have been taken care of by the town. So, we have found efficiencies and have policies to reduce them.
For the comment on Article eight? Seeing none, all in favor of Article eight, signified by raising your cards? All opposed? Article eight is passed. Article nine, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five thousand dollars for membership dues to the Eastern Trail Association? There a motion on Article nine? Motion's been made seconded on Article nine. Discussion on Article nine? Sir?
I worked against this last year, just because it's not enough for other people using it. And I'm not sure what we got for five thousand dollars, other than just that, because the limbs were across the road. Again, I don't think people in Arundel ride bicycles up and down that path, but there seem to be not a lot of people riding, going down the road from our house to the path behind my house. The Eastern Trail Association, I think, could do a better job of funding their own trail. So, why should we have to take that trail and run out there and take the limbs off of the road? You have to take the limbs off of those, you don't have to ride bicycles, you can do themselves. And then, there's some prohibitions. I can't take a horse and a dog cart down there without, they could decide, but it's not motor vehicle. So, it looks like it's a toy for people that think they ought to have a toy, they ought to pay for it. I don't think we should. I'm going to vote yes.
Other comments on Article nine? Sir?
What do we get for five thousand dollars?
Say your name. Say your name, please.
Year one.
Thank you.
What do we, if we don't pay the five thousand dollars, what happens then?
Is there anyone I want to address it? Mr. Redway?
First of all, we are part of the Mr. Joe Management District. We voted in two thousand one in order to create the Mr. Joe Management District for one very, very important reason, and that was to build this trail that goes from Kagerit to Southport, with purposes of not only providing recreational opportunities for residents, but also providing some opportunities for economic development in town, because of the clientele of the drugs from outside. One of the things that this town, along with the sister communities enjoying this, wanted to do, was to form this dis, this corporation to protect us, the town of Arundel, the citizens of Arundel, to ensure that we could marry all of our resources, the total tenants, and to ensure that we would also be able to pay, protect ourselves in case of liabilities, the Mr. Joe Management District's responsible, not the town of Arundel. Also, to be able to leverage federal funds, that's what built the trail, wasn't us who built the trails, federal funds that built the trail. We wouldn't have been able to do that without the Mr. Joe Management District, because we wouldn't fall apart. The third thing that the district also provides us with, which is very important, is that our five thousand dollar contribution helps to not only fund the staff, staff people that man in office to take care of all complaints, deal with all the events, arbitrate between property owners, schedule inspections by the feds and by the state, and essentially do all the jobs that we would have to do if we were one of them. all the jobs that we would have to do with real one, the trail. Quite frankly, it's a lot of work. It's tremendous, and in fact, we're finding that it takes a lot more time than the inner part of the road. So we're getting a great deal for five thousand dollars because if we don't do it, we're gonna have to pay some of the town to take care of all those responsibilities. The other thing that it does is it also gives us great leverage with Unitel, which is the utility, uh, which owns that nuclear facility. And they tried to, in the past, put some responsibilities, fiscal responsibilities on the town, and shift a lot of maintenance load on the town. And Eastern Joe Management District gives us strength in standing up to Unitel and saying, no, I'm sorry, this is the contract, it's the deal we made, and you shall continue to abide by it. And so it, it gives us a lot of leverage that we wouldn't have as, as an individual community. And by the way, horses are allowed on the trail. They are permitted on the trail. And everything except for motorized vehicles is allowed on the trail, and that's not because the trail is trying to prevent that, it's just because that's, that's the deal we had to make with Unitel. Unitel was not allowing motorized vehicles on the trail. They prevent that, and so we have to abide by that as part of our eastern contract that we have.
Further comments on article?
I use the trail at probably least three times a week, you know, and I, I encourage anyone who hasn't had the opportunity to do so, to please try it. My biggest concern is the fact that I have to give them to Kenny Bum to access, or to Bitterford to access it, and that I can't access it from my hometown. I meet more people, more families with children, seniors, joggers, bikers, everybody, everybody's friendly, it's just, it's clean, it's off. I've tried walking from the town hall to the trail, and I, I, if you feel like you're taking your life in the hands of, once you get on the trail, it's just quiet, it's peaceful, and it's pleasant, people are pleasant on that trail, everybody says hello. It's, it's a wonderful benefit to the town. I encourage people that if you haven't had a chance, even if you only go like a couple hundred feet down the trail, try it and see how beautiful it is. It's a great asset, please, you know, like, I think the association fees are to our benefit, you know, we become part of a whole. This trail has gone now from this, and, you know, it's in bits and pieces, but eventually it will be, you know, amazing, and it's like, and I think we are lucky that it's coming through Urundale, and that, you know, it's not going through Kenny Bum to Kenny Bum Court, it's in Urundale, and I think we should think of it as an asset to the community, and I hope you support it.
David Burke, we own a successful business here in town, and we bring a lot of people into private state, and that trail has been a very big plus for our customers, helps me to be successful, helps town as a whole.
Dave Scarborough, I just had a question. I have not used the trail, and then a little bit further away to just get to it, but I'm confused about, because of all the signs right near the entrance down here on the Linder Road saying you can't park there, are you supposed to park at the town hall?
I, uh, I'm the original contractor, and I, I use it for a while, and apparently you're the, he's the only one that doesn't park there because there are days where there's cars, there's no less than eleven signs that says no parking, but then ten day the road. And maybe some of these people use the library and learn how to read. There they are, and all of that, there's ten pro- loads of bicycles that's nothing cost more than my first house. And if they got that kind of money, let them double park a lot someplace. But I don't like supporting it because it, it's taking money from everybody in this town, and I have neighbors that can barely walk, suggesting they ought to walk on the trail is absurd. And they don't have the money to pay us back, we're driving people out of the run, by keeping it one dime here and there, doing the stuff we have to do, and, and if this is so important, that most people think it's important and want to use it, let them pay for it.
Further.
My name's John Bell. Um, it'd fall very well to say, like, the people will be using it, pay for it, but that is completely impractical. I agree with what some old head will say. The times I've been down there, I've met people that I know, I enjoy walking it, I see a hell of a lot of people down there, I think it's of all use for our town halls, and five thousand bucks, I think it'd probably be the best part we'll get.
Article nine, are you up? Okay, all for vote on article nine, all in favor, signified by raising your cards. All opposed. Article nine is passed, article ten. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifteen hundred dollars for an eastern trail maintenance account? Is there a motion on article ten? Seconded to approve article ten, discussion on article ten.
Is this the money that we use to put the signs up with that says no parking, ten day the road?
No, it's not. Further comment on article ten? Seeing none, all in favor of article ten, signified by raising your cards. All opposed. Article ten is passed, article eleven. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of six hundred forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars to the roads and barrage account? Is there a motion to approve article eleven? Motion's been seconded to approve article eleven. Discussion on article eleven, anyone?
So, Reverend, I'm wondering what the, what's the reason for the increase of eleven percent?
What's the reason for the increase?
Todd Shea, town manager, the reason for the increase of eleven percent is for an additional position at the public works department, to be able to complete projects in a more tiny manner, to not as heavily rely upon contracting flybys and to allow the public works department to use the vacation time that they earn, that they currently lose to the town because of accrual limitations to.
Sir.
David Burke, the chair, is it true, Mr. Town Manager, that that's replacing a position a couple years ago?
Thank you for whom this is the chair.
Uh, the chair, Todd Shea, town manager, that's actually replacing two positions that have been eliminated from the department over the past seven years, Roger?
Further comment on article eleven? Seeing none, all in favor of article eleven, signified by raising your cards. All opposed. Article eleven is passed, article twelve. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eighty thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars to the town transfer stations slash recycling account? Is there a motion on article twelve? Motion's been seconded to approve article twelve. Discussion on article twelve, anyone? Seeing none, all in favor of article twelve, signified by raising your cards. All opposed. Article twelve is passed, article thirteen. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of seventy-eight thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars to the general assistance account? Is there a motion on article thirteen? Motion's been seconded on article thirteen, discussion on article thirteen, sir.
Richard, uh, through the moderator and the town manager, why the decrease?
What decrease?
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. The decrease is due to the, I wouldn't say lack of use, but we've been overappropriating for the past few years for the welfare portion of the general assistance account. So this year, we've gone from thirty thousand dollars for welfare to twenty thousand dollars of what we know as welfare, and so that was where the reduction came from.
Further comments or questions on article thirteen? All in favor of article thirteen, signified by raising your cards. All opposed. Article thirteen is passed, article fourteen. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred five thousand six hundred two dollars to the recreation account? Motion on article fourteen. Motion made seconded on article fourteen, discussion on article fourteen. Your first, please.
Reverend, uh, we're, uh, we're increasing this town by eleven and a half percent. We're up to fifty million dollars for recreation. And I'm just wondering, using Gene's, uh, uh, logic, why should I have to pay for recreation when I don't use it? I'm just curious about that.
Anybody in the board to handle it?
I don't know what to have to handle that, Mr. Moderator. Current fiscal year, the recreation department has brought in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenues, so for the current fiscal year, you're looking at approximately thirty-four thousand and one dollars that it's costing you to run the recreation department. The reason for the increase is the increased demand for programs, and for this current fiscal year, we're budgeting for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in revenue, and I would expect that to exceed that expectation. So I guess I can't answer why you have to pay for those sort of numbers.
Further comment on article fourteen?
Uh, the chair, so what I heard is that not all numbers are there, is the, uh, appropriate sum requested, two hundred five thousand, is proportional to what you, what is expected as increase in the, uh, these revenues that brings in?
That's correct.
Further comments or questions? Seeing none, all for vote on article fourteen, all in favor, signified by raising your cards. All opposed. Article fourteen is, is passed, article fifteen. Shallow voters authorize a board of selection upon a majority vote of the full board of selection to exceed by no more than five percent annually the amount authorized for each account approved in articles five through fourteen above, so long as the amount spent on, for the sum total of those articles, does not exceed the total appropriation approved for those articles. Is there a motion on article fifteen? Motion's been seconded on article fifteen, discussion on article fifteen.
Question. What does the, uh, what does this fix?
What's it fix?
Todd Shea, town manager, uh, what this fixes is if there is a department that has, um, let's say, an overrun in maintenance items, I'm just using this as a comparative example, but if the public, the public works department overran their expenses by five percent because of maintenance or any other reason, and there was another department that was running under expenditures, so they wouldn't be expending their full amount, we would be allowed to transfer the money from one department to another without increasing the overall spending of the town.
Further comments on article fifteen? Seeing none, all in favor of article fifteen? All opposed. Article fifteen is passed, article sixteen. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four hundred forty-five thousand dollars to the road construction reserve account? Is there a motion? Motion made seconded to approve article sixteen, discussion on article sixteen, anyone?
We've got more roads, and some of them are worse than they were for the year ago, and we're gonna fix them for about fifty thousand dollars less than. I guess my question is, and I know what the cost of some of the materials gone up, um, I don't know how a lot is gonna accomplish that, but I'm, I'm concerned that we're letting the roads build at the expense of some other things that are viewed with nice to have. And the roads, if I'm in trouble and I need an ambulance, I'd like to get them there as quickly as possible, not slow down the bond, most take a lot of travel because, uh, the roads are, are not passable.
Further comment on article sixteen? Seeing none, all in favor of article sixteen? All opposed. Article sixteen is passed, article seventeen. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars for the public works capital equipment reserve account? Is there a motion? Motion's been made seconded to approve article seventeen, discussion on seventeen? Seeing none, all in favor of seventeen? Opposed. Article seventeen is passed, article eighteen. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum forty thousand dollars for the Urundale fire rescue capital equipment reserve account? Is there a motion? Motion's been made seconded to approve article eighteen, discussion on eighteen? Sir.
Dave Scarborough, I just had a question, um, is that money put aside and then used every year?
Um, not every year. It's put aside and it will be used in the future to either purchase a new ambulance, new apparatus, so it's held in a reserve account specifically for fire department use.
Further discussion on eighteen? All in favor of eighteen, signified by raising your cards. All opposed. Eighteen is passed, nineteen, article nineteen. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five thousand dollars for the recreation department bus reserve account? Motion? Motion's been made seconded to approve article nineteen, discussion on nineteen? Sir.
About how many people use that bus in the recreation season?
I'm gonna have to defer to the rec director on that one.
Who's the rec director?
The recreation season, that's something we have been prepared for, although we've prepared for a lot of things. So I can tell you that we take kids and children on, um, the first Wednesday of each month is a half-day school, and we take kids and children everyone, um, on that half-day trip. We run vacation week trips, we run summer rec, um, we run adult trips, we do shopping trips, we run a lot for all, for adults, we have thirty-five of our employees on that trip. So, it's in summer rec, we have hundreds of them, we take part in the, we're busy. The buses, we're all active.
Further discussion, sir.
So it looks like there's more people who they had in the library.
Moderator, the town manager, is there any money still in that capital reserve account from when we originally purchased the bus?
There is. Um, in the, currently in the, uh, rec bus reserve account, there is four thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars and eleven cents.
Mr. Moderator, how long will that current bus that we have last?
Manager, how long will the current bus be?
Uh, I think that's, the, the response to that would be one to the longest end of the public works department is if you could tell me how much snow we're gonna get this year, uh, we, I, I don't know. We are hoping that it'll last a very long time for an eighteen hundred dollar bus. With budget improvements, it's, it's doing a pretty good job. But I don't know, to life expectancy, we're nineteen ninety-nine on this bus.
Hope you're, you're, you're fine.
Let's hope.
How much did the rec department spend on maintenance on the bus last year?
Uh, on the bus last year, maintenance, I would, not including getting the bus up and running, I would anticipate less than fifteen hundred dollars.
Roger, you agree?
Approximately fifteen hundred dollars to the bus.
Further comments on article nineteen? Seeing none, all in favor of article nineteen? All opposed. Article nineteen is passed. We've already voted on article twenty, article twenty-one. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate three hundred and fifty dollars to be held in a reserve account to be used for families in need of library access without the means to purchase a car on their own? Eligibility will be based upon the town of Urundale General Assistance Guidelines, in effect at the time of the request.
Motion, you say, where in order?
I, I appreciate your point of order, I, um, and I, uh, agree with it, so, uh, we're gonna move along to article twenty-one because it does thoroughly state that, uh, I'm sorry, twenty-two, if article without twenty is adopted, this article is not needed. So, um, we're gonna move on to article twenty-two. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate ninety-two thousand for police protection? Motion's been made seconded to approve article twenty-two. Uh, discussion on twenty-two? Sir.
Reverend, possibly we could find out why the increase of twelve percent?
We find out why?
We certainly can. The increase of twelve percent is due basically to increases in health and benefits for the, sheriff's deputy that we have for the town of Urundale. The contract that we have from the sheriff's department is subordinate to the union contract that the sheriff's department has with, has with the deputies, and that's what that is his contract.
Further discussion on article twenty-two? Man?
Todd, will there be any?
Can you say your name and stand up, please?
Can we, would there be any additional time spent or all that extra cost was based purely on benefits?
That was based purely on benefits.
Further comments or discussion on article twenty-two? Seeing none, all in favor of twenty-two? All opposed. Article twenty-two is passed, article twenty-three. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate forty-three thousand five hundred twenty-two dollars in order to provide stipends and hourly compensation for Urundale's emergency personnel? Motion's been made seconded to approve article twenty-three, discussion on twenty- Discussion on 23? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 23? All opposed? Article 23 is passed. Article 24, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $264,284 for the operation of the Arundel Fire Rescue Per diem program? Motion on 24? Motion's been made, seconded on Article 24. Discussion on Article 24? Sir, at the back, please stand and say your name.
Um, but I want to know this, okay. We provide stipends for hourly compensation for personnel, and now we're moving on to provide per diem program, wouldn't that all be the same?
Please say your name for the record. Please say your name.
Say your name.
Oh, Jake Hawkins.
Thank you very much. Commander?
Uh, Jake, uh, Article 23 is for volunteers responding to fires and emergencies, accidents and the like. Uh, the Article 24 is the uh, per diems that run the ambulances. So there's two different, there's a call force in Arundel where they turn up.
Oh, okay.
So there's a, it's known as a volunteer call force, but it's actually a paid volunteer force. The other one is for the stipends for the per diems and the EMTs.
Okay, thank you.
Here?
Yes, to the chair, I guess to the town manager. Could you possibly give us a, a brief rundown on comparing our ambulance service and how much it gets used compared to uh, the adjoining towns like Kebunk and Kebunk?
If I may, um, we don't get ex, we don't get nearly as much use, I don't believe it, I'm gonna pass this to the fire chief in a moment, but um, compared to communities such as Kebunk where there are assisted living facilities, there are a lot more calls to service than we have in Arundel, but we do have a considerable amount of calls to service, and I would ask that one of the fire department members to please uh, provide a little additional information if they may.
Sir? Yes?
Uh, my name's Bruce Mullin, I'm the uh, fire rescue chief. Around the runs, I approximately somewhere between five and six hundred calls a year, that's all calls. Eighty percent of that are almost ninety percent is, is ambulance calls. You pay to like, uh, you take like Byron and Dayton or Woodsboro, that's two towns that are a little bit bigger, they run about six hundred calls. So we compare those are that, but one thing that does save us is we don't have the elderly, nursing homes or whatever. The other thing is we need to remember about, and I don't know the figures because it goes with the general fund, but the ambulance brings in revenue, it's to offset, it doesn't pay for the full cost of the vehicle, but it does offset some of the costs, uh, because it goes with the general fund, so it would be a loss of revenue, but majority of the calls, uh, it goes by, we're, we're pretty, we, I'd say, I have never, I've done a check really on Town Hall besides everyone, like a research, uh, to see how we compare. I'm assuming that we may run a little bit more higher because in summertime, I do a group one, and 111 is a big group one in his business, so uh, those are something I'd say, you know, we've got seasonal places to open up, and we see these and, and we see those.
I, I mean...
Sir, can you stand and say your name again?
Dave Scarborough, uh, Chief Chair.
Yeah?
I read, I have read in newspapers that some of the towns are starting to get into uh, using ambulance services for transport.
Right, right.
Do we do any of that, and is that a possibility to help the credit cost?
It, it, the problem with that is...
You should explain what that is.
Yeah, okay, well, what that is, is like, usually you take somebody like Kenny Monk, they do that. They had two ambulances that run emergencies, and then with all the elderly, uh, housing and stuff, they had, this is a little what they do, is they decided they'd go on a third ambulance, and that takes care of the, you know, if uh, somebody's had to go to the hospital, or somebody goes to x-rays and stuff like that. The problem with that is it, it takes your emergency people out of service, so what they did is they, they went and they bought any, or they, they kicked back their ambulances, they bought them, and what they do is they do it on like a call basis. Somebody calls, instance like, I need an ambulance today, uh, my mother or, or a patient to the hospital for x-rays at two o'clock, they'll send out a tax and says, who's available? And they'll bring them in. Yes, it makes money, but it also costs you money.
So we only have one ambulance?
We have one ambulance, okay? So it would be not, what, what they do also do, and I know Bitterford is a city, they also, what they've done with Southern Med is they do what they call a revenue transfer. And rather than give all the revenue to a private ambulance service, the chief of Bitterford went to the council and said, uh, you know, how about we do it? So now that Bitterford has a, and there's a transfer to Southern Med's main company, they call Bitterford, with the people they have for these, the backup ambulance, and both, that's a decent, that's a decent amount of money, because it's like a one-day trip. And it might be something in, in the future that, uh, we could kind of get in as a backup, because it would be, it actually would be a money deficit, because the cost around on the half. The problem with that is for one ambulance, we, we don't have to tell you straight from the start. Even though we have to, to, but that, but you're right, I mean, if Arundel ever got to a point where they had an influx of, uh, or a lot of, you know, apartments or assisted living or anything like that, it could be something that we could consider with, uh, picking, if you're buying an ambulance, if the other one is maybe public works, if he was going for a thing, a very good part of health and wellness, that would, and we could do something, but right now, we're not set up for it. It would be cost-effective, thank you.
Further discussion on Article 24? All in favor of Article 24? All opposed? Article 24 is passed. Twenty-five, Article 25, shall the town vote to authorize a board of selection through the Recreation Committee to offer new programs not included with the tap, with the year's budget, so long as receipts from these programs fully cover their costs? Motion? Motion's been made, seconded to approve Article 25. Discussion on 25? All in favor of Article 25? All opposed? Article 25's passed. Twenty-six, shall the town vote to authorize a board of selection to sell or otherwise dispose of excess vehicles and equipment pursuant to and consistent with the written policy adopted by the board of selection, after public notice, and deposit any proceeds into the appropriate department's reserve account? Motion? Motion's been made, seconded to approve Article 26. Discussion on Article 26? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Twenty-six is passed. Article 27, shall the town vote to authorize a board of selection to accept unconditional donations of funds, real estate, and/or equipment on behalf of the town, and dispend them as deemed appropriate? Motion? Motion's been made, seconded on Article 27. Discussion on Article 27? Sir?
But it's a good idea that I get out of the way to spend it as deemed appropriate, because I don't buy stuff and I don't care, but if it's something of a significant amount, then I think that we ought to have some discussion for the goals, and if it were to have that effect, then they're able to support that argument, but right now, I can't support that argument with credit.
Anybody, any comments? Further comments on Article 27? Sir?
I just have one question from Izzy. Is there gonna be some language in there to ensure that a gift doesn't end up costing us any money? You know, because sometimes people can give you something like a building or something, and all of a sudden, you know, you could run into hazardous waste problems, like they did down at Kenny Monk.
Well, if you have... If somebody makes a gift, you have to accept it, so you're not gonna take something that's gonna cost you some money.
Sir?
First and all, we elected those five people to make those decisions for us, I have no problem letting them say this is how they think they should take care of the issue.
Further discussion on Article 27? All in favor of Article 27? All opposed? Article 27's passed. Article 28, shall the town vote to authorize a board of selection to transfer available funds such as tree growth, veterans exemption, excise tax, registration fees, and any other funds which might be used for reduction of the tax commitment? Is there a motion on Article 18? Motion's been made, seconded on Article 28. Discussion on 28? All in favor of Article 28?
Just to hit the last, the last item, which might be used for reduction, what else would that be used for?
Can I answer that? Oh, yeah. Okay, okay, all, uh, any further discussion on Article 28? All in favor of Article 28? All opposed? Article 28's passed. Article 29, and I can read all these numbers. Shall the town vote to accept, raise and appropriate the sum of $1,598,671 from estimated revenues to reduce the tax commitment as follows? There's several figures, um, and I'm not gonna negotiate them because they're right in your book. If there's a motion to approve Article 29, oh, second. Motion's been made, seconded to approve Article 29. Discussion on 29? We got it. All in favor of Article 29? All opposed? Article 29 is passed. Moving right along, I think there's probably some Bruins fans here.
I think motion to move Articles 30 through 38, which are general housekeeping articles, as one?
Second? Tom Drew, thank you. I never like to uh, second-guess or contradict too soon, but I think we've got it all for these, and I promise I can, I can move it fast, you've heard these fast-talking announcers, I think I can serve. Uh, Article 30, shall the town vote to authorize a board of selection to enter into multi-year contracts not to exceed five years for the lease and purchase of goods and services, when they deem it in the best financial interest of the town? Discussion on Article 30? All in favor of Article 30? Article 31, shall the town vote to transfer the funds received through the sale of tax-acquired property to the municipal building reserve fund? Motion? Motion's been made, seconded to approve Article 31. Discussion on 31, all in favor of Article 31?
Okay, let's see.
Very worth it. We read discussion, okay, I don't hold that vote, you stand up and make a discussion, you raised your card, and I do...
Phil Riddler, um, why, why would we, um, put this in the, uh, municipal building fund? Why don't we use it to increase funds, to make gas?
So you wanna, why wouldn't we use it to be credit?
Uh, it, it very likely could be done that way, but if you look into the grand scheme of things, it, it does reduce your tax eventually, when you have the need, such as we do now for a, a time loan. Um, so we very well could put it into the general fund to be used at a later date, uh, this is the way the article's been worded for longer than I've been here, uh, and it runs parallel to, uh, the vehicles and equipment that are sold and put into the, uh, proper department's, um, reserve accounts.
Further discussion on Article 31? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article 31 is passed. Article 32, shall the town vote to authorize a tax collector to collect partial payments and prepayments of real estate, real and personal property taxes? Motion's been made, seconded on 32. Discussion on 32? Seeing none, all in favor of 32? Opposed? Article 32 is passed. Article 33, shall the town vote to authorize a treasurer to collect partial payments of real property lanes? Motion? Motion being made, seconded on 33. Discussion on 33? Man?
Yeah, I just have a question, um...
Say your name again.
Pam Warden. There isn't quite good money in outstanding taxes, how does that process work, and are we pretty successful at it, or?
Are you speaking of, um, real estate or personal property, or in general, this one?
Well, uh, let's see, I guess I was looking at outstanding personal, outstanding taxes and tax lanes, and then there's also personal property taxes, I mean, there's some businesses that have recurring taxes due from 2007, and it far exceeds $12,000 for the library fund, I just wanted to count it down.
Um, so far, uh, real estate taxes, though, you all are very aware, since you've never been late on your re, real estate tax payment, that there's a very well-defined process that the house goes into foreclosure and it becomes property in the town of Arundel if a certain amount of time expires. Uh, personal property taxes are a little bit more difficult. Last fiscal year, we cleared up a, a, a good amount of the, um, uh, personal property taxes in arrears. Some of the ones that you see that are still listed are, um, foreclosures, or, uh, there are other circumstances associated with those where we're not, who are unable to collect. Um, but I do, on an annual basis, go after, uh, accounts that are more than two years in arrears, and it gets to the point that times where board of selection has to authorize to write those off, because the court costs the time that it takes to try to collect the $200 debt isn't worth the money that we expend to try to collect it. But we, I do keep an eye on those, and we, once a year, send nice letters to people and tell them that they owe us money.
Yeah, because there seems to be a couple of chronic offenders.
So now you're...
Just to clarify the process, you know, the real estate, you have a lead process where you leave it, they have eighteen months to pay, and then they go to the culture. Personal properties might not like that, you only collect your projects, it's small claims, or even if you get the claim, it's small claims, or you might currently get payment, and some of those accounts are maybe just fine, because it's a particular asset, it's a question, it's making them, you know, you're a lot of the lead, because you can't propose. So personal properties sometimes are difficult to, you know, have a process for collection compared to the fiscal, you know, to that, thanks, Simone.
Further comment on 33? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 33? All opposed? Article 33's passed. Article 34, shall the town vote to set due dates on all property taxes as October 10th, 2013, or thirty days after tax bills are mailed, whichever is later, and April 10th, 2014? Motion? Motion's been made, seconded to approve Article 34. Is there a discussion on Article 34? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Article 34 is passed. Article 35, shall the town vote to charge interest at the rate of seven percent per annum on all real and personal property taxes remaining unpaid after the due date set in Article 34? Motion? Motion's been made, seconded to approve Article 35. Discussion on 35? All in favor? Opposed? Article 35 is passed. Article 36, shall the town vote to pay the interest rate of three percent per annum on overpayments of real and personal property taxes refunded due to abatement pursuant to 36 MRSA Section 506A? Motion? Motion's been made, seconded to approve Article 36. Discussion on Article 36?
Phil Riddler, I wanted to point out that the local banks pay something opposed to one ten, one percent, one, uh, interest, and we're paying three percent? That's ridiculous, right, we're paying three percent?
Commander, share.
You're right, we're here, uh, the, um, state statute requires that if we charge seven percent per annum on late taxes, that we can only charge four, four percent less than that, uh, give, can only pay four percent less than that, but the language here is kind of confusing. You can't come into Town Hall on, uh, tomorrow, give us $30,000 and say, here you go, I want interest. Um, what that is for is in the event that you file for an abatement and receive it, and you have paid your full amount of taxes, let's say you get abated for $500, that amount would be refunded plus interest at three percent. So what this does is it, um, it stops municipalities from holding on to people's funds without properly, uh, charging them off to your accounts. And so if we were to commit taxes, you were to come in and pay, um, and you paid too much, and we knew it at that point in time, because taxes had been committed, then we, we are required to pay that interest rate. So you can't, people can't just come in and give us, I've said it many times, uh, you gave $20,000 to my Town Hall and say, I want three percent, but that's not how it works.
Further comments on this article? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 36? Opposed? Article 36 is passed. Article 37, shall the town vote to authorize a board of selection on behalf of the town to sell and dispose of any property acquired by the town for nonpaying the taxes, consistent with the state statutes and laws? In all cases, the conveyance is to be made by municipal quit-claim deed. Motion? Motion's been made, seconded to approve 37. Discussion on 37? Seeing none, necessarily scratching their head, but that's okay. All in favor of 37? All opposed? 37 is passed. And last but not least, Article 38, shall the town vote to accept and spend as deemed by the board of selection to be in the best interest of the town, any and all grant money that is awarded under the Town of Arundel by the United States government and/or state of Maine under the Community Development Blocks Program, the Land and Water Conservation Program, or any other similar grant programs in the upcoming fiscal year? Question? Motion's been made, seconded to approve Article 38. Discussion on 38? Sir?
Sometimes grant monies, you get, you have to spend it on what they say you gotta spend it on. Sometimes there's leeway. Is this the kind that if, if we get it, we gotta spend it on what they say, or is there some leeway?
Occasionally, we receive grant monies that are specified for... Occasionally we can receive grant monies that are specified for items, recently we received grant money for what was known as Winter Storm Nemo, they named lizards in state of Maine now. And so we have, the board of selectmen have policies as to how those monies can be spent. So those were, you know, those funds were not specifically committed for anything by federal government or the state, but we do use them responsibly.
Further discussions, right back?
Yes, see, I've got a town, but also just for the, for the, you know, the federal government considering requires all municipalities to pass this language in order to accept the individual spending. So that's not certain.
Anything else on Article thirty-eight? All in favor? To the flag of the Republican Party? All opposed? Article thirty-eight is passed. Go up and make the motion to adjourn the meeting. Second? All in favor? Meeting adjourned. Thank you for a great live discussion. Go Bruins. I just wanted you to pass...